Involving mainland schools, we should encourage Hong Kong schools to become sister schools with overseas schools so as to expand their vision and horizon.
Mr. Tong Lee Chee, thank you, Chairman. First of all, I want to talk about, speak on Amendment Number Twenty-Six. I believe the Joint Office involving the Buildings Department and the FHD, there's no reason to cut the provision according to the latest ombudsman's report. We, in Hong Kong, there's a serious water seepage problem. It's a, there's also a serious problem with bursting of water mays. It's a fifteen point two percent. One, there's one every two days. Now, we have a joint office comprising the officers from the Buildings Department and the FHD. And a lot of these cases are caused by bursting of water pipes. But there's no involvement by the Water Surprise Department. So the composition is not comprehensive. I received a letter from the Association of Surveyors. And it said that the complaint against the Buildings Department is not really justified. The Buildings Department should be the lead department in such, in the investigation of these cases. But from the records in the past ten or years, eighty percent of the cases involving the walls or the ceiling, more than ten percent has had, has, have to do with water pipes. Most environmental nuisance cases. And therefore, these cases are not related to structural safety. And only one percent can be attributed to UBWs for, on which the Buildings Department will follow up. For cases involving subdivided flats and more complicated cases, the FHD and the Buildings Department will work together to find effective solutions. And since the Buildings Department is only empowered under the law to deal with water seepage due to structural issues, ordinary or other water seepage cases are dealt with by FHD. The current arrangement is not working in addressing people and campaigners' concern. So the government should comprehensively review the structure of the Joint Office, the position and the work direction and the mode of operation of the Joint Office. It was set up, the Joint Office was set up in two thousand and six. It's a carriage without any, any leader. It's a joint office without a leader. The officers will only be responsible to their respective department heads. With that, with complicated cases, the two departments would be in conflict because they would argue who should take the lead. The Joint Office, I must point out, is providing the, is carrying out the investigation on behalf of the campaigner for free. And the cost can be more than ten thousand dollars per case. As a result, private property owners would neglect their own duties and they would just lodge complaints. As a result, the Joint Office has to handle much more cases recently. And although the government has employed more technology and investigated more cases, the problems just won't go away. These departments are not providing a panacea solution. Property owners should be encouraged to do timely repair maintenance to prevent the problem from occurring. And since the building stock is aging, we, I would like to remind the member to consider the Hong Kong Institute of Surveyors' proposal, which was made in two thousand and seven, to set up a tribunal to deal with disputes arising from water seepage. And, and owners can then be reminded to carry out the repair maintenance required. This is a much more comprehensive solution to the problem. And I also want to talk about Amendment Number Twenty-Eight and Number Forty-Two. I want to comment on these amendments. As we know, land supply and housing supply is suffering from an acute shortage problem. According to the consultation documents published by the Task Force on Land Supply recently, the development of sites takes a long time. On a developed site, it would take eleven to fourteen years on average to see housing production completed. For bigger, new development areas, the time is even longer. So apart from reviewing the advanced preparation stage, there would be the need to carry out engineering feasibility studies, which would take three years. And there will also be the need to conduct public engagement exercises and to complete the statutory planning processes. And then there will be the detailed design stage, which are also time-consuming. As for the land formation, and after the land is granted, to take forward the relevant projects such as infrastructure, the time taken is from three to five years. Given that these are lengthy and time-consuming processes, so I believe that there are some areas for streamlining to shorten the time taken for each process and to expedite the entire construction and supply of housing units. I have some interviews on how to enhance the process. I'm glad that the Secretary for Development has promised to set up a task force to look at the current processes and to find ways and means to improve them. And in the review, the procedures on the part of departments and the coordination of different processes will be looked into. In responding to my questions, the secretary indicated that the first proposals will come out in the latter half of this year. I think the secretary has taken on board our suggestions and the processes can as a result be expedited. Civil servants are facing the increasing workload. So we expect that there should be an increase in manpower for the departments. The lands department is suffering from a chronic manpower shortage problem. They are, the department is responsible for vetting various applications for lease modifications and for land sale. And all these processes required a lot of manpower. And now there's a proposal to delete eighty-eight posts in the lands department. It would not help us expedite the land surprise process. This will mean that the grassroots and the tenants of subdivided flats will continue to suffer in cramped living environments. And Amendment, under Amendment Number Forty-Two, the deletion of a senior town planner is proposed under the amendment. I won't support it. The creation of this post is to provide a support to increase land supply so that we can effectively do the planning and to ensure sufficient land is supplied to sustain our growth. Why is it that this, this is not allowed? And we're talking about non-director officer post. This is simply unreasonable. Mr. Alvin Young, thank you, Chairman. I'm going to speak on Amendment Number Forty-Five. That is Head One Four One, One Four One. Reducing the Secretary for Labor and Welfare's pay. But the government has now decided to give handouts to the people, which is something which it was so reluctant to do. Since we are, we have this drastic change of mind, still not much applause has been given. Since the patch-up measures were announced, we are going to benefit, we are still going to see two point eight million people benefited at a cost of eleven billion dollars.
But the administrative costs is as high as three hundred and ten billion dollars. And we, if we hand them out, we can benefit a lot more people. And then for able-bodied, three-person, says as a family, the balance is fifty dollars. And for a person on disability allowance, the top-up amount is five hundred odd dollars. So we'll, these cases will tell you whether the scheme can receive the applause of the community and whether the scheme can benefit the majority and whether money is well spent. I think many people out there have, have a question marks. And I think we should learn from the Working Family Subsidy Scheme. The procedures must not be so cumbersome as to deter people from applying. So a scheme meant to alleviate poverty can really do its task. Now, the Labor and Welfare Bureau has no, has got nothing new for helping the elderly and is using very limited measures to help the elderly. If we look back at all the budgets that are passed, the Civic Party has always asked that the waiting list be cleared in five years. However, when it comes to increasing RCH places, the government only pays lip service and increase the number of places nominally. And as a result, the effects are rather saddening. In reply to members' questions this year, we understand that two thousand, six thousand two hundred elders passed away while waiting for RCH places. And this is roughly the same figure, if not a little bit more, than what it was in the past five years. You don't need a scientific mind to tell you that there is a great demand for RCH places. And for those who passed away while waiting for a place, well, they have not benefited from a government's promises year after year. And the figures on the increase, I would like to use a statistics to convince you. Those who passed away while waiting for a place, five thousand two hundred in twenty thirteen. And twenty seventeen, last year, we had six thousand two hundred and fifty-nine elders. I don't want to, to pin down on the cause. Is it because elders are healthier and so the waiting list is longer? But statistics prove that while waiting, more have passed away. And they, they could not be allocated a place when they were alive. So we really cannot help out elders to have an happy old age, and that is a problem. We want the administration to understand that we fully appreciate that the government's policy is to allow elders to age in place. However, we cannot disregard the need for institutional care. And Civic Party is of the view that two odd million, billion dollars should be spent on improving community care for the elderly so that elders will have to wait a little bit shorter to get a place. Meanwhile, they can also age in the community more comfortably. However, elders have to wait for at least one year before they can have community support services. When such services are so insufficient, will elders be comfortable to age in the community? In the past ten years, the Mr. Matthew Jung, who used to be the Secretary for Labor and Welfare, he was not from the social welfare sector. So he faced a severe criticism during his term because his policy could not convince the frontline workers that these policies were effective. However, this time we have Dr. Lo Chin Kong, very familiar with social welfare policies. And yet, this term of government has assumed office for almost a year. Have we seen major improvements? I'm afraid not in this budget. And I think they are just following the previous policies and measures, and the signs are worrying. We are worried about the secretary's long-term blueprint and strategies for elderly services. Whether it be in council settings or in the relevant panel, I've said a number of times that this term of government is important. If we agree to the government's data, and that is we will have a peak in the elderly population in twenty thirty, then what we should do here is to lay a solid foundation for the future. I'm afraid that this government and the secretary in particular cannot give us any confidence. A year has elapsed and we do not see any actual effects. And that's the reason why we want to support this amendment to slash the pay for the SLW. Just last Saturday, I had a gathering with Form Five students to discuss with them various social policies. And one is directly relevant to this amendment in question. And that is to relieve the manpower shortage serving the elderly. Must we import labor? I talked about the pros and cons with the students. I agree that we have challenges in recruiting manpower. And therefore, some professionals are of the view that importation of labor is the only way out. But the other side of the coin is, we have manpower shortage. Is it just because of difficulties in recruitment? Have we tried to find out the ultimate reason for this failure in recruitment? Because, is it because the pay is low and there is no professional recognition? And perhaps the experience of staff don't feel that they are fairly remunerated and they would rather turn to other jobs? So importation of labor sounds like a simple and quick fix. But it may be able to help in the short term. But what about the long-term situation? We have to take care of our local elders. They may be our family members or friends. To ask foreign helpers to take care of our elders, is it something we wish to see? Now, from foreign domestic helpers to foreign workers, they are strangers. And if they are asked to take care of our elders without receiving any professional training, is this the message from our current government? Is this the message to the community that this is their strategy to tackle the aging population? I think we should tackle the problem at source. We should raise the pay and status of elderly service workers so that they can work with dignity. And we should attract young people when they see that a profession is well-respected and are fairly remunerated. And if they can find a job that is stable with a fair return, then young people will be attracted to join the trade. I think this is the long-term solution to make elderly services sustainable through my discussion with the elders. I want them to see that to tackle our aging population, which cannot just rely on importation of labor. Well, even the Form Five students were able to understand. I'm sure the secretary can, and the message is loud and clear. Meanwhile, I'd like to discuss life and death education and continuous care. We face a tsunami of a big aging, aged elderly population. We will face a peak very soon. And how much have we done to prepare our people to face death so that when they face at the final stage of life, they can face up to it squarely? I don't see anything in this budget, but this is very important. We have to respect life and we have to learn how to face death. And this is something sadly missing in Hong Kong. We agree that Hong Kong is an international metropolis. This is indispensable. We must have a blueprint to achieve that. I think this is perfectly feasible. Unfortunately, this term of government, the secretary, Dr. Law, hasn't done anything convincing in this regard. And also like to mention another point is related to kids. We talked about elderly services, but helping our kids is also important. The media have lots of reports about young children with disabilities and special needs. And there is a greater demand for preschool rehabilitation services. However, the disabilities can come in various ways and forms. And therapies and treatment are very expensive. Although the government has agreed to waive the means test for families seeking help to allay their concerns, however, the reality is we don't have enough supply to meet the demand. As a result, many preschool kids have lost their golden opportunities to receive treatment or intervention at the right time. We must have more professionals to fill the service gap. We should allow young kids and adolescents to be identified early so that there can be early intervention. I'm coming to the last part of my speech. I'd like to talk about poverty alleviation. Well, the government's poverty alleviation has been criticized for being a very piecemeal. They think that the CSSA as a safety net will be sufficient. But if we look at statistics, we will see that poverty has, is worsening. The low-income earners, the grassroots and the basic stratum of society, it's true that we have the Care, the Community Care Fund, and we also have a Low Income Family Subsidy Scheme. But they are only short-term. They cannot provide any ultimate solution. We still have cross-generational poverty deeply seated in Hong Kong. Unfortunately, we don't see anything in this budget to assist the SLW to address this problem. To tackle this problem effectively, we have to tackle it with education in the long term. We must have proper population policy and education policy so that we can lay a firm foundation for better mobility of our young people. I hope that, well, the government might have missed some very important opportunities to do something about this. I hope that the government can start to prepare for the next policy address and budget. And we cannot rely on one or two policy addresses or budget to address long-term solutions. However, we must make a start. I hope the SL government understands and understand the wish of the most needed in society. Thank you.
Mr. Al Nakin, Chairman. I would like to focus on Head Fifty-Three Home Affairs Bureau. However, I'd like to respond to some comments made by members. For instance, some of my amendments are on the Food and Environmental Hygiene Department, the Water Seepage Office, now, the Joint Office for Water Seepage. Now, why do I want to cut the expenses for this apartment? I want to pull it down so that we can rebuild. And that is in a game, you have to kill a certain character so that it can reborn, it can be reborn and have a better chance. Because the Buildings Department, the FHD, have set up a joint office to deal with water seepage, they are just passing the buck from one to another. I'm a victim, I have water seepage problem at home. I have been kicked from FHD to the Buildings Department, back and forth. So this is a problem with public administration. You must have an independent office and you must enforce the ordinance strictly. And equipment use must not be too old-fashioned. And they are given over a hundred million dollars for the operation of the Joint Office. This is outrageous. Now, I'd like to return to Head Fifty-Three Home Affairs Bureau. I could have spoken on other amendments, but then the Secretary for Home Affairs, Mr. Lau Kong Wai, is here. I treasure this opportunity to direct communication with him. All right, I have Item Fifteen to cut eighty million dollars. And that is the funding scheme for a young internship on the mainland. And Item Sixteen, that is the pay of the Secretary for Home Affairs for the whole year. But then this is not my amendment, but I do agree to this amendment. And then before I go into this amendment, I'd like to comment on Program Three of the Home Affairs Bureau. And this is the district-led project scheme. And it's related to this amendment. And then Program Two, to promote social harmony and also civic education.
I know that there is something added to it. When we look at previous budgets under this program, these words were absent. So we find it very strange. How come all of a sudden we have seen the addition of three hundred youngsters? I do believe that it's related to the Youth Development Commission. Because with the setting up of this commission, they need resources, support. And then they think there needs to be youth policy. I do see that, well, they have just given it more beautiful wrapping papers. The essence are the same. And it's just like that youth, international youth exchange. There are many different names to this, of the same thing. We see first of all an exchange, and then there, there was an internship, and then there are visits, and then there are services. Well, it's an exchange and it's called a funding scheme. Previously, it was organized by the Youth Commission. With a few more of these tools, they expanded it to a funding scheme. With a few more of these tours, they expanded it to a funding scheme. Different bodies would make applications to organize these exchange groups. I have made four amendments. First is the funding scheme for youth internship on the mainland. Funding scheme for international youth exchange as well as two other schemes. One's related to exchange on the mainland and then another one for international youth internship. I only, I was only allowed two amendments, so I'm afraid that it is not complete. Still, I would like to speak on them. In an audit commission report, you see that the audit severely criticized these programs. If you have been to consultant, if you've been to these, been to these places or if you've been a consultant, then you will know that the funding scheme for international youth exchange and just a scheme for international youth exchange, a program. We always notice this. Well, they have put more emphasis, emphasis on the mainland and not so much on international exchange. In twenty thirteen, fourteen, eight thousand four hundred people and last year, over nineteen thousand people for the mainland exchange program. One of the approved program was organized to celebrate the twentieth handover renovation to visit a full yen. Funding approved was six hundred and twenty thousand. It sounded grand, but let me give you some other information. Well, the tours organized by the bureau may not all go to the mainland. Mr. Lau, the secretary, said in his second reading speech that they would amalgam, they would consider amalgamate the funding scheme for exchange in Belt and Road countries and the funding scheme for international youth exchange to provide more exchange opportunities. They see that they need to seize the opportunities of Belt and, of Belt and Road. However, they were concerned that if it's Belt and Road again, some people may oppose to it. So they want to stuff the international youth exchange into it and try to amalgamate these two schemes. For the funding scheme for exchange in Belt and Road countries, only one point two million dollars with the amalgamation, that would be a hundred million dollars. Various bodies may apply for this funding for another six years. If I say that it is sneaked into it, Mr. Lau may not agree. So there was a one hundred million dollars for international youth exchange scheme. Nathan Law, who was then still a legislator, asked a lot of questions. The administration did not give us satisfactory answers. Last year, they said that there will be funding scheme for international youth exchange. But according to FHAB zero four, they said that the new youth exchange program, it covers thirty-three projects covering twenty-five countries, ten countries in Belt and Road. Why this sudden change? And it wasn't discussed in Leggo either. First of all, I am neutral when it comes to Belt and Road initiatives. But I hope that the HAB can explain to the Leggo. First, the amalgamated scheme, is it good use of resources? There will be more funding. The number of participants, if it remains the same, is it good use of resources? They estimated four hundred people last year to participate. And they explained that that number was high because it was a celebration of the twentieth anniversary. And in twenty seventeen, there were only one, two, three people, just like an old organization. And in order to rationalize the hundred million dollars funding, well, they now gave us some more information. Twenty eighteen estimated number of participants, one thousand and ten people, an increase of more than seven times. So you said there will be four hundred people and it turned out that a hundred and twenty-three people came. And this year, you say that you expected to increase to one thousand and ten people. What is your justification? Well, when the controllers, controlling officers' report was submitted, do they really think that the turnout will be as high as one thousand? When Mr. Lau spoke, he said that he expected that these organizations who help to organize these tours when they have gained experience, they will be able to organize more quality and in-depth exchange projects. I think it's slip of tongue. Well, it means that the quality currently is still, need, still needs to be improved. I asked whether there is a review mechanism, whether there are in, assessment indicators. The answer was that in due course. I think that in the end, the HAB would like to continue the scheme and do it more. How can we assess whether it is a valuable money? Why would they say that there will be a review in due course? We see the figures. Why are they going to be continued? And I would like to talk about also audit report number seventy. Actually, I share the same view as the audit. They have identified some inadequacies in vetting of applications. According to the HAB, S HAB zero four, they said that vetting criteria covers whether it is an in-depth exchange, whether it is an establishment of partnership. But over the years, everything was relied on, everything relied on paper interview. You want in-depth exchange without any interviews. How can you ensure that NGOs who organize these activities will be able to organize something that is in-depth? And some, and a lot of members have potential conflict of interests. It's just like what Ms. Tanya Chen said. Well, you are, you appoint members, but they don't appear in meetings. There are two, there is a two-tiered declaration of interest. First, you will have to declare interest beforehand and the second tier is that and you will have to declare at the meeting, but it is problematic. There is an example. A member actually holds a post in forty-six youth groups. So it's very difficult for that person to not miss anything. Is it reasonable to appoint that person? Even if you say that there, there is no flaws in the decoration system. Well, you rely on the members to exercise restraint. You have honorary members, chairman, honorary consultants. Do you think that the current decoration system can address the problems? And the administration is quite lax when it comes to gatekeeping. Mr. Nathan Law and another member asked questions, as well as Mr. Ken Niffling asked questions. The administration said that no members have indicated that there are any conflict of interest with items under discussion. Well, let me go back to the International Youth Exchange. The administration said that there is a dedicated team to vet the application. However, the audit report said that it's by circulation. There is no meeting. The HAB S hyphen HAB zero five said that in the past five years for international exchange programs, they have been taken up by the same NGO. So there is a problem. Four hundred and sixteen invitations, there are only sixteen quotations received. Only, well, fourteen of them came from the same NGO. I would like to use this chance to get some answers from the HAB. Mr. Eddie Ju. There is a noise. Is it your phone next to you? I think that's everyone's problem. I've already moved my phone. I would like to speak on a number of amendments. First is in relation to the Office of the Chief Executive. Two amendments, one of Mr. Ray Chen and one of Dr. Kwakwaki. Dr. Kwakwak is about twenty eighteen, nineteen C E remuneration. I did not plan to focus on the chief executive. However, after this morning's question and answer session, I was so shocked and appalled that I want to speak, to say something about amendments I've proposed previously.
Mrs. Carrie Lam said this morning. Well, it's kind of political blackmail targeting Leggo members. And that is for behavior and speech that is in violation of the constitution or the principle of one country's system. There should be no tolerance. So what's this about? I think it's about the assertion that we should not go for the end of one party rule and we should uphold the constitution. This is one given by Mr. Wang Ziming. So in the future, the basic law is not in this drawer. It will be replaced by this white documented constitution of PRC. Is that what they want? Is that under the direction of the C E legislators? Should express our clear positions towards the Beijing administration? What if we decide not to say anything? We decide to be weak? And now this, the C E is threatening us. So that's a big, one of the major reasons why I should support the amendment. Or it's said to be unconstitutional, but the whole world knows this. The PRC and the CCP are most accused to be a serious violator, violate, are said to have violated the constitution. No, this constitution states that the people of PRC enjoys the right of speech, right of association and rights and the freedom of expression. And now we, we know that a lawyer, a citizen on the mainland expressed support for the umbrella movement and she, he was charged with of trying to topple the government. And a human rights lawyer was arrested without charge, without any charge. His wife waited for a thousand years. And now Madame Liu Xia, the widow of Mr. Liu Xiaobo, wants to leave this country because she can no longer tolerate the situation. So what do you mean by constitutional? What do you mean by compliance with the constitution of PRC? The freedoms, look at the freedoms of speech, of assembly, of expression, of the press. Well, she should have said something on our behalf. She should have paid more attention to human rights on the mainland. And she should not just be talking about money or the Bay Area, as she said, which is curious. She said she got seven hundred and seventy-seven votes. I don't know whether that would include the one from you, Mr. President. And in fact, she was in no one's debt. And I think, I thought about it. Well, then I start, I start to understand. Yes, she was in no debt to anyone, but she was in debt. She is in debt to the Chinese Communist Party. Because thanks to the CCP, she got seven hundred and seventy-seven votes. And she would do whatever the party would ask her to do. She was not even brave enough to answer a question on, on, on what her mother tongue was. So that's another reason why we should reduce her pay. I think on such crucial issues, the C E should clearly tell us where she stand, where she stand in the context of one country, two systems. But she, because of the worry that the CCP would be offended, she did not even dare to answer Mrs. Shu Kajin's question about what her mother tongue was. And Mr. Andrew Wan asked whether she had the resilience and and the boldness to face up to those people that are using the golf course or to the landowners, i.e. the developers. She responded by saying, by accusing us instead of answering the question. Why talk about collusion, government-business collusion? We are talking about public-private partnership. These people have purchased the agricultural lands and they enjoy certain rights. If we do what you suggest, we'll be sued. And she said in her eye, there's no vested interest, only public interest. But then she went on to say that because of some vested interest standing in her way, she would try to cooperate with them. And to her, that's the only way to safeguard public interest. And this is my way of interpretation of what she said. But do our people want the C E to budge in front of the vested interests? The land resumption ordinance is very clear. The government enjoys some power. And if it's supported by the people, why can't we take them, why can't we take the case to the court? Actually, we already got a pressing case. Mrs. Carrie Lam said that those cases didn't count. Well, let's have another case on the resumption of agricultural land. You have been resuming agricultural land all the time. Well, look at Northeast NT. You have been resuming agricultural land all the time, well, look at the Northeast N T. Resume agricultural land for public projects. And the the C E is is saying that, well, I'm not bold enough to fight you. So I I I want to cooperate with you. Actually, the the housing sector is now hijacked. And they are not, and and the C E is is not fighting our cause on our side. She's not on our side. And this she she seemed to suggest that there's no way out for us. So from what she said this morning, uh I would think that she's not a suitable holder, post holder of of C E. But well, we're not among the twelve hundred E C members. So nothing we can do about that. I will now turn to head forty-eight, Constitutional Mainland Affairs. Sorry, it's Amendment Number Forty-eight, Constitutional Mainland Affairs. Uh the amendment is moved by me. I propose to reduce the expenditure for the E T Os. And this proposed cut in expenditure provision has triggered some discussion here. Uh this morning, we we talk about the Bay Area too often. We talk about economics too often. If we want the people of Hong Kong or people in China to have a happy life, well, it's not just about earning more money. And even earning more money is not really achievable because of the wealth gap and the disparity in opportunities. And now legislators here have to hold up this Constitution of the P L C. We have to abide. And so our these are offices in Beijing, in Guangdong and other places. And while we do not overstep the mark and intrude into their territories, would these officers, E T Os, please do something about Article thirty-five of this Constitution, safeguard the rights? Please highlight these rights in in our E T Os. So that you should help the activists and the human rights activists there. And we should not just talking about money, the Bay Area. Because in Hong Kong, we want people to be able to lead a life of dignity and a afforded equal political rights. And also the right to change the nature of the government or the way the government is composed. This is anything but fair. Two more minutes. I want to talk about Amendment Number Nine. The Office of Sustainable Land Tao. Why do I want to cut the provision? Because it's not doing anything. What we see is just a shell. It said that the North Land Tao will be developed and conservation will be done for South Land Tao. So the a lot of things is progressing in earnest in the in the north, but nothing is done for preservation or conservation in the south. So why should we give the full provision to the office? That's why I want to cut the provision by half. The Sustainable Office is only interested in, is only carrying out its duty in regard in regard to the development of North Land Tao, but nothing in for South Land Tao. So let's ask them to show some sincerity. As Dr. Fernando Zhang often says, if we have, if we want to tell people that, uh we want to tell whether this is a good community, we should look at how the the vulnerable and disadvantaged are treated. Well, we're talking about the disadvantaged so so often. Because if we treat them nicely, that that we are in a strong community. And if the even the disadvantaged can lead a life of dignity, then of course, this those people with better means will certainly have a better life. So so I submit. Mr. Chairman, in a capitalist society, should it be turned into a primeval forest and where this the strong always prevailed over the weak? And you have to be the winner if you want to be strong? And other people are bound to be losers in such a society? Well, over the years, we tried to voice out to ask those in power to do some reflection that even though this is a capitalist society, it should at the same time be a civil civilized community. So the people have hopes that their lives, their livelihood can be improved. It's an equitable and just society where there are basic human rights and it's open and free.
But after many years of talk, never imagined that even today, while I was not at the Q and A session with the C E, but I realized that her performance was very poor. Rather, she has shown us her true self. I was discussing with the sector, the licensing arrangements for homes for the disabled. Now, for subvented homes for the disabled, the success rate of getting a license is even lower than that for private homes. We urged the administration to work harder because the legislation was enacted seven or eight years ago, and how come the licensing issues are not yet settled? Uh they, the deadline is getting near, is coming near, and then there may be a lot of works to be carried out affecting the people living in these homes. So in terms of in many respects, including Cantonese, which are so used to speaking in Hong Kong, is now not allowed, and then the transfer of sovereignty, resumption of sovereignty again, such terminology is not acceptable. So we will follow direction from Beijing and even uh these terms cannot meet their criteria. So there's budgets about how we utilize public resources for redistribution of valuable resources, that's the first time. The market did the first round of distribution in the in the market, the jungle jungle rule applies. And so we have to have redistribution and we have to put in restrictions, requirements so that it would not be too outranges. In the redistribution of wealth, we want, we hope that people in need or in hardship can be given support, not just the disadvantaged. We also want environmental protection and things for public interest that are that are not viable in the private sector can be taken care of. It is the government's responsibility to invest public resources into them. Culture and conservation, all these are items that require the government to invest public money into. We is not just about helping the poor, the weak and the disadvantaged. Of course, they should be attended to. In the F S block, he said that this time, how are we going to use money in this budget? First, one-off relief measures. And also recurrent expenditure should be increased. And three, investment in the future. I don't know what is about investment for the future. Perhaps it is setting up a fund so the money can be set aside of to be used in the future. One-off relief measures. Well, because they are relief measures, they should be targeted at those with hardship. However, for the fifty million, fifty billion odd one-off relief measures in his budget, over forty billions of them are for the wealthy, including concessions and rigs, a profit tax and service tax. Well, profit tax are paid by those who make profits in their business. Service tax are paid by people who are salary or income earners. And it's true that our service tax is on the low side. There are people who are paying service tax, but they are relatively poor. And do we have to help landlords? Well, he is giving out forty odd billion dollars. And what's left is for O A L A, O H allowance and disability allowance and C S S A payments. We have no objection to those measures. We've never criticized the F S for doing this. And even for rent relief measures for P R H tenants, we have no objection. And then I have discussed with the F S before. I said that for one-off relief measures, they should really, the money should really to ease people's hardship. But he paid no heed to my suggestion. And then the public didn't like the budget because it's not really helping the needy. Since the government has over hundred and forty billion dollars in surplus, you may as well hand out money to us. I think handing out cash is a sign of surrender. It's tantamount to a meeting that you cannot help the the community. We have an aging population. What are we planning to do for our care and attention services for the elderly? The waiting is so long that our public health care sector is has almost collapsed. The middle class will not rely on our public health care system. So the grassroots are left with no choice. But do you want to see our public health care system in this state? No, but you should you should have provided resources into it, but you haven't. You don't know how to do it. And we haven't got any retirement protection scheme. Uh C Y Lam introduced the O A L A. He was unwilling to introduce universal retirement protection. And Carrie Lam used sophistry. Instead, we have the enhanced O A L A. Let me say that this is unsustainable because our population is aging. Now, if you dare to make a projection into the coming fifty years, now you refused to introduce universal retirement protection using a projection of fifty years. Now, if you dare to do the same for the enhanced O A L A, for sure, I guarantee that you will see that it is not viable. Because universal retirement protection is a contributory scheme with dedicated money for a dedicated scheme. It involves redistribution of wealth. People who have the means will have to contribute more. Otherwise, it is impossible that someone who has never been economically active will be able to receive retirement protection as soon as he reaches the eligible age. And by means of contribution scheme, the government doesn't have to fork out extra money. A scholar proposed that a hundred billion dollar fund be set up. In fact, fifty billion dollars fund has been set aside. And this year, over sixty billion dollars have been handed out. This is a big waste. This year, together with last year's, we would have implemented this universal retirement protection scheme using that one hundred billion dollars. So but you don't know how to do it. We asked the the F S, how come you need to spend money in so many areas? And he would blame it on other bureau directors. Now, some of them are here. Is it true that you haven't asked the F S for money? Madame Choi, Undersecretary for Education, we have S E N children waiting to be served. Why haven't you asked for more money from the F S? On the one side, we have a public coffers bursting to a seams. And F S has said that nobody came forward to ask for money and he had no choice but to hand out cash. However, the way he handed cash is so inefficient and so costly administratively speaking. Uh there will have to be a means test. You have to declare whether you have received any rates concession and any other allowance. And the administrative cost would cost a few hundred million dollars. This money could have been spent on buying drugs for patients. Well, at most, you have seventy million dollars for the H A to subsidize the procurement of extremely expensive drugs. And you are spending three hundred million dollars on the administration of this cash handout scheme. So you act as if you want to be the animal, enemy of the community. Now, if we argue with you about the Communist Party or the political system, you may want to disagree with me, but I am debating with you people's livelihood. How come you are still at a loss after so many years? Now, you blame it on the shortage of land. Now, if you really don't have enough land, how come you can achieve your land sales program every year? Why should you sell land every year? Do we want more luxury flats? Are these luxury flats for people to live in? No, they are for investment. They are for the rich to invest. Housing is a financial tool in Hong Kong. They are not for inhabitation. People cannot afford private housing anymore. Only P R H can be for accommodation. And all of a sudden, suddenly they have changed P R H to a green form subsidized housing. And then people will buy instead of waiting for a P R H unit. You have tight land price policy and the land cost, the living cost is so high that in all aspects of of life, we are paying Aspects of uh of a life, we are paying more for rent. You pay five dollars for a pineapple bun and part of that goes to the rent. And you ask people to uh buy private housing and if you can't afford it, you wait for a P R H. Uh we cannot build enough to meet your needs and so you just wait. Wait for a P R H unit, wait for a niche in Colombarium. And then you got all the uh estimates for the surplus wrong. You are entirely irresponsible. If you don't know how to do your job, you should give way to someone who knows how to do it. You should build up a better system so that people who are competent should take your seats. So give way to competent people. Carrie Lam, Paul Chen, Matthew Jung, you should give way to people who can do it. If you're really capable, Hong Kong would not have come to this state. You have been government officials for so many years and you uh put the blame on your predecessor when we are faced with this disaster. And you have huge surplus and you're not willing to do it. Your time is up. Uh Mister um Roy Kong.
I noticed that when it comes to number sixteen, that is um had number two. That is the reduction of the secretary for home affairs. The annual um remuneration of the secretary. How is it related? I would like to explain to you. The secretary for home affairs is responsible for um. Cult- cultural creation as well as arts. When, when asked, what is your mother tongue? Mrs. Carrie Lam refused to answer. I was amazed. How difficult is that question? And I think that Lau Kong Wah should stand up at that time. Because he should speak up for Cantonese. Let's look at what he has said in the past. Miss Claudia Moe is here. Back in twenty fifteen, she moved a motion to protect Hong Kong from mainlandization. I noticed that when Mister Lau spoke, he said first to the effect. First, let me reply to medium of teaching. We attach importance to bilingualism as well as um. The three languages are used in the communication. Uh in general, mother tongue is used as the medium of teaching in Chinese. And it's been shown that Cantonese has played a very important role. As Hong Kong's mother tongue. Back in twenty fifteen, Lau Kong Wah has very bravely answered something that Carrie Lam did, did not dare to answer. Mrs. Carrie Lam said that making uh something out of nothing. Well, I think it is her who did it because, well, who said that um Cantonese is not mother tongue? Who refused to answer the question? And who, and Mister Lau said in a question, to, in answer to a question in twenty fifteen, that Cantonese is a mother tongue. And the secretary did not seek elucidation this morning. Because he should have said that this morning in twenty, uh well, he should say that in twenty fifteen, I have said this. And Carrie Lam is ridiculous. That's why in amendment number sixteen, I would like to dock his pay. Because, well, Carrie Lam has completely embarrassed. Lau Kong Wah this morning. Well, I do think that it is very strange because how difficult is that question? We have records, we have written records. I know that Mister Lau's strongest point is to stay silent. Well, he rather not say anything than to lie to you. Well, now, this morning, Mrs. Carrie Lam are blatantly trying to embarrass you. You have said that Cantonese plays a very important role as mother tongue and medium of teaching in Hong Kong. Well, let me explain more. According to some statistics, in between two thousand five and twenty fifteen, when it comes to uh culture and cultural creation. There has been an increase of seven point six percent, higher than a five point four percent of G D P increase. The percentage of cultural creation has increased from three, three point eight percent to four point seven percent. Now, and the number of people employed has increased by about one to, one point two percent per year. That is in general, but when it comes to those employed in the cultural crea- creative industry, over two percent, two point two percent indeed. Well, we have uh Cantonese, we have Cantonese ti- uh films, we have Cantonese songs. And it just doesn't affect this city. There are lots of different cities who listen to Cantonese pop, Canto pop. And a lot of people use Cantonese as their mother tongue. Let's look at the creative, uh the uh cultural creative industry. Well, the bureau doesn't do anything. The secretary did not say anything when something wrong was said. So when it comes to cultural creation in Hong Kong, uh situation is quite poor. We have a very beautiful story. When it comes to literary creation, we have uh Louis, um we have. Cha, we have Danny Chan. We have a number of excellent writers and singers and songwriters. Well, in Hong Kong, if you want to stage a show in an industrial building, you'll be arrested. You be charged exorbitant rent. It's difficult for you to find somewhere to stage your performance. These things should have been done by the H A B. In two thousand nine, uh there was a three hundred million dollars gray, gray smart scheme. In two thousand nine, there was another three hundred million dollars and this budget, there will be another one billion dollars. But what help does it give to the industry? Well, we have high land prices, high rental. If you're an S M E, if you're a somewhat independent, you won't be able to get any benefit. There is uneven allocation of resources. That's all over the place in the cultural industry. We don't ask for subsidy. We just want some room to exist. Well, you'll be chased away if you operate in industrial building. You don't fi- have, find anywhere to uh stage your performance. You are not allowed to preserve your own culture. Now, there is a one billion dollars to renovate M T school premises for religious and cultural and art bodies. To app- apply. It may happen, but it will not be easy. Because they have to um first communicate with um. Those who need help. There are hundred eighty-three M T school premises. Well, two, hundred twenty-seven of them are reserved for G I C. Some cultural bodies have made applications, including a, a primary school in Taipu. One in Taihang Road and one in Sha Zin. So far, the applications is still in, under consideration. So in the end, will the amount be put to good use? We don't know. The one billion dollars, does it instantly uh keep a cultural competitiveness? I am afraid it's only a drop in the ocean. And I already told you that Hong Kong is a treasure trove. Back in nineteen eighties, there are a lot of people. There are a lot of things that stem from Cantonese. Cantonese is very difficult uh to learn with the nine tones, as experts can tell you. But we're proud of Cantonese. Still, to this day, we use Cantonese in debate in Legco. This morning, when Carrie Lam spoke, she spoke in Cantonese. So I don't understand when you asked, what is your mother tongue? She said is a meaningless question. How meaningless is it? You are the honorable chief executive. What's meaningless about the question? Why didn't she answer the question? So, we wonder whether they see Cantonese as a treasure. Something that you need to protect and cherish. As I said, that the person who should have spoken this morning was silent. Lau Kong Wah is not here now. Otherwise, I would have asked him. He said it. He said that we should protect schools. Uh so that they can continue to use Cantonese as the medium of teaching. That's why I go, go back to number sixteen, the reduction of the annual remuneration of the secretary. Why? Because as I've said, when it comes to uh cultural creation, uh what has he done? Well, uh people have been chased away from industrial buildings. Cantonese is threatened. We had our glorious days when our films were sold everywhere. We do believe that there are still a lot of talented and gifted people here with us and they should be given a chance. But there are no policies supporting them. They don't even have a place to, to do their work. Let's look at past input. Twenty sixteen, an increase of two point five percent, four billion dollars. Seventeen eighteen, four point two pers- um, four point two billion dollars. Twenty eighteen nineteen is about four point seven billion. There's only a few percentage points in education, healthcare, social welfare. If you just increase it by a few percentage points, does it mean that, well, um, there will be huge progress? No. But it shows how, much importance the government attach to this. Um what they have done to strengthen our soft power. Let's look at South Korea. They have a lot of films. And in interviews, they said that they really love um Hong Kong films back in the nineteen eighties and they grew up with watching it. How is it related, rela- how does it relate to us? Well, that's where your soft pa- power comes from. If your films are successful, and overseas countries will see you differently. When you, when you get there, you may, you may see something different. But films give you a different image. Back in two thousand nine, well, uh cultural and, and creative industries is one of the six new industries. It's been ten years. The secretary, Lau Kong Wah, what has he done? What has he done? Well, when asked, what, when asked about mother tongue. He pretended that he was deaf when the question was thrown at the chief executive. That's why it's only natural that Mister Andrew went, wanted to re- to take away his pay. This morning, so question and answer session gave us a lot of food for thought. It's not difficult to answer the question, what's your mother tongue? But it shows that Hong Kong people are very proud of uh uh mother tongue, which is Cantonese. Why can't you admit it? Cantonese has brought us glorious days. We have Wang Jin, we have um Joseph Ku. A lot of people use Cantonese, which is our mother tongue. And turn them into different products and showcase these products to the world. Of course, uh um the government has a role to play. I mentioned a place, Wesley Village. I dream that the place can be revitalized. So that it can become an art village. It's in Taihang. The story is based on a fictional character written by Ngai Hong. The character is Wesley. And it, I would have been reading um the novels. Currently, the place is abandoned, but it has a rich history. If, well, we see that in Taiwan, there are many different arts and cultural park. I hope that, well, for the one billion dollars to renovate about vacant school premises. I hope that the space can be properly used so that they will be turned into um create. Cultural creative parks. So that we can get back our glorious days like those in nineteen seventies and eighties. Most important thing is to have faith in our la- in our own language. We can continue to ta- tell you one by one how great Cantonese is. What's the problem with Cantonese? I've been speaking Cantonese since I was, since I was young. There is a, a saying, a colloquial one saying that if you can't speak Cantonese, go back to where you came from. Why is the shame, so ashamed that you can't answer that Cantonese is your mother tongue? Well, I want um people to know that the secretary has done nothing when it comes to promoting the development of cultural creation.
Chairman, I want to talk about the amendment proposed by Mister Chen Chi Chen, number one two one. It's about the provision of a full year's remuneration of L W B. I fully agree with the proposed cut because of the following reasons. Hong Kong is an international metropolis. Our G D P is among the highest in Asia. And also, we are the. Having the worst wealth gap in Asia and among the poorest in the world. That is to say, we have very the po- big problem of wealth gap. The one of them uh extreme cases. This is really uh sad and regrettable. Uh our economy is doing well and yet the grassroots are not having a good life. According to the Census and Statistics Department, the Guinea coefficient now is at the highest in forty-five years. And for elderly poverty rate is the double the general rate. And with an aging population, the poverty of our elderly population is twice as worse. Twice as bad as the general population. Also, the, the is uh related also to the intergenerational poverty. And very often, because of the lack of uh means, these people in poverty would have to be helped. Through the social security network. So we foot the bill in helping them. And the problem is not just bad, it's getting worse. We have a hundred seventy-five uh people who are regarded as work, the working poor. And there are more and more of the, of this group of people having tertiary education. From eighteen thousand to two, twenty-eight thousand. Among them. In the past five years, we have seen an eighty percent increase of the, of the working poor population, holding tertiary education qualifications. Many graduates have to work long hours for a low pay. So what lies ahead for them? How can they improve their life? How can they have uh established their new fam- uh new families? So it seems that there's no answer to all these questions. So what has governed, what has Hong Kong done to address poverty? In twenty eleven, the statutory minimum wage was introduced. In twenty eleven, the statutory minimum wage was introduced. But it, the problem started to surface since the introduction of the minimum wage. The first question, why was the review carried out only once every two years instead of annually? Because if we adjust the uh minimum wage rate annually, we can help the grassroots in improving the living standards. So the, what we have seen is that the situation is not much different from before the introduction of the new minimum wage rate. Because not many people uh got help. At first, it was twenty, it was said that fifteen percent of the working population would benefit from the minimum wage rate of uh twenty-eight dollars. So why, why not help more people? Why draw the line at fifteen percent of the working, working population? All right, let's look at the downturn in twenty eleven. It was estimated that one hundred eighty thousand would benefit from the introduction of minimum wage, which means six point four percent of the workforce in Hong Kong. Although the line is drawn at fifteen percent, ultimately it was not fifteen percent, it was not achievable. And then there were four reviews, four changes to the minimum wage rate. And the uh benefit for the workforce is getting smaller and smaller. So as, as I suggested, it's as if we have not introduced minimum wage. Originally, it was hoped that more people, many people would benefit from minimum wage, but ultimately very few. And to a very small extent, because the rate is just twenty-eight dollars. At the same time, compared with other countries, we are the lowest in terms of the minimum wage rate we have. Compared with other Asian countries or European countries, we're far lower than the, the rate in New Zealand, UK, France, Australia, Canada, and, and the like. Why is our rate so low? Well, in those countries, uh the, the minimum wage should enable the worker to earn fifty or sixty percent of per capita G T P. But ours is just nineteen percent. And in South Korea, the minimum wage rate would enable the worker to earn forty percent of the per capita G T P. And as some labor groups have pointed out, we should review the minimum wage uh system. It should not be reviewed once every two years. And also inflation, rent, another uh living expenses should be factored in, in the review. The government claims that it has already done so, but if we look at the rate of increase, uh it's really a ripoff for the first two times, it's two dollars and then a two dollar fifty cents. So there's no need to the carry out any survey or, or, or review. It's just two dollars or two fifty. At first, it was twenty-eight dollars. It's very low, although it's said that we should start with a low rate. Now it's thirty-four fifty. If you work an eight-hour day and then you work twenty-six days per month, uh you earn just seven thousand something a month. How can you cope with uh the uh expenses that you need to incur? Even if you go to a fast food shop, you, you, it costs you fifty or sixty dollars a meal. And that means two hours of, of wages. You can earn a meal, the equivalents of a meal after working two hours. So is that the, the way we show respect for work? Is that a way to to offer people a chance to make a living? There's an additional problem apart from the low minimum wage rate. And this is the biggest problem faced by many. Many low-income earners are living in the poorest environment, apart from those accommodated in the P R H. And that is to say, they live in a subdivision of France, and the rent is much higher than P R H. The median rent of P R H is about fifteen hundred a month. So in terms of minimum wage rate today, uh setting aside the rent, uh the, the, the person will have one hundred ninety dollars to spend for a day, not much. But if they live in a subdivision Fred, the F H or medium rent for a subdivision Fred is four thousand five hundred dollars. So if you, you earn the, uh a salary at the minimum wage, after deducting rent, you have two thousand six hundred dollars for a month. So it's eighty-nine dollars a day, not even ninety dollars a day. If you have only got eighty-nine dollars a day to spend, how can you cope, given the current uh price levels? If the worker is an elder, he can scavenge for a cup, cup of paper. So apart from work, from the uh job, what can he do to cope with the low income? What can he do to, to cope? I hope the L W B uh of officials would go out of their office to see how these people are leading a life at such an income. And whether it's possible for them to have a dignified life. It's claimed that a lot has been done. And we have been uh able to uh make improvements uh under the uh, the poverty line um principle. But, uh, well, actually, the number of people living under the poverty line remain at a million or so, so not much has been achieved. What is more disappointing is that the labor policies are now part of economic policies. When there's proposal to improve workers' benefit, the government would tend to be very conservative and try to the avoid doing this. The C E denied this morning that her government uh favors uh the business sector. Actually, the business sector is not about, is not in favor of the proposed improvements of mentions of many uh some, sometime ago. And then the C E the, with the we take the cue and remain silent. When we ask for the better protection for worker, apart from being evasive, you also claim that this will affect the investment environment. This is uh always the case, that you mention the investment environment. But you never say that you should do something to the af- afford uh the working population a decent living standard. So although you do not say you favor anyone or that you don't favor anyone, but the reality is that it's the opposite. Let me now turn to the Labor Advisory Board. It's the biggest obstacle to the, the improvement of workers' welfare and benefits. Because when, whenever there is a proposal, whether legislative or administrative in nature, to improve welfare of workers, then the first stop would be to go to the Labor Advisory Board. Uh in the L A B, there is an equal number of members on for both workers and employers. So how can we take things forward? Because if the uh employers representative don't agree, then there's no way you can get things endorsed. And when legislative amendments are table here and we want some amendments, some further amendments. For example, in a recent case, we want, we wanted to increase the penalties. And the answer from the government is that the, the matter will be referred back to the L A B, causing a further delay of, of more than a year. So nothing can be done if the government can, do not respect this council when it comes to the making improvements. Don't, the government should not try to the shift the responsibility to the L A B. The L A B is used as a shield or an excuse for doing nothing. So I'm in favor of reducing the provision for the L W B's uh officials provision. Don't say that you can do nothing about labor welfare. Don't ignore the, the price of the working population. And more importantly, you should not try to the promote the interest of business at the expense of workers.
Mister Charles Mark. Madam Deputy, I'd like to comment on amendment number eighteen from Mister Ray Chan. Uh that is to cut eighty-four odd million dollars from head fifty-five pro, subhead O O O equivalent to the uh uh whole year expenses on salaries uh for the communications and creative industries branch under the Commerce and Economic Development Bureau. Now, I'd like to talk about um the um undesirable performance of this division. Now, in particular, in mobile uh telecommunications and assignment of spectrum. Just yesterday, the S E E D and uh the Telecommunications Authority Office announced that they would start a public consultation on five G spectrum. So if the three-month consultation exercise goes smoothly, then starting from the first of April uh twenty twenty, uh the spectrum will be assigned by means of auction. And then, if everything goes smoothly, the auction will take place in twenty nineteen and uh with effect from the first of April twenty twenty. So from two G to three G to four G, you're going to have five G. We understand the five G is very important to development of Hong Kong into a smart city. And the Internet of Things require a high-speed and low-era telecommunications network. Whether it be an assignment of spectrum licensing and rolling out of services, we were always the leader in the world. Other countries such as the UK, South Korea, and France, we were just as um speedy as these countries, but this time we were lag behind. Uh we may even lag behind uh the mainland. South Korea has tested that and in Japan. Uh before they uh run, host the Olympic Games, they're going to roll out five G and will only be able uh to assign the spectrum in April twenty twenty. The UK just last year, last month, assigned a thirty-one hertz and forty megahertz spectrum for five G technology. And three point four gigahertz uh spectrum was assigned. And we only start the consultation uh next, now, public consultation. The industry said that they've been waiting for the government for two years. So uh we are severely behind. The UK has already issued the relevant licenses. Italy, Portugal, and Australia and uh will roll out five G services very soon. First, Hong Kong shouldn't have to wait until twenty nineteen before the auction takes place and for assignment in twenty twenty. We don't need to wait for I T U uh to uh set the standards in twenty nineteen. So we were the leader, now we have fallen behind to the second or third batches. The industry uh believe that next, by next year, there will be uh five G mobile phones uh launched. And yet, we don't have five G services yet. When uh we had three G services, uh the network was available and the phones were not available. Now, this is exactly the other way around. In twenty fifteen, I T U in its conference uh specified specifications for three point five hertz and seven hundred megahertz uh for five G mobile services. And since then, uh economies such as Germany, Taiwan uh have already auctioned the spectrum and the UK has done that and mainland is testing out the services. In this council, I've been urging the administration to work faster. It should deal with this three point five uh gigahertz and seven hundred megahertz spectrum earlier. So the services can be rolled out earlier. However, the Telecommunications Authority Office has always said that we are not really behind. We should wait for uh the conference in twenty nineteen before we make a decision in twenty twenty. Last year, at a panel meeting, the government uh was still saying that. And back then, many telecommunications operators were very anxious because spectrum was limited and they will be uh made available very late. And so they don't know how to make a long-term planning. Why are we moving so slowly now? It's only in March, last March, that we recover some of the twenty-six megahertz spectrum. Uh we recover them from some operators for communications. And uh we also recover some of the spectrum for satellite TV services. It's just like a land planning or the lack of planning. Some users or some operators have occupied these uh spectrums and the utilization rate is low and the government doesn't want to bother to recover them. And perhaps this is the same with analog TV. We waited for the um specifications in the mainland. Nobody wants to watch analog TV anymore and yet we still have such TV services. Even our T H K is providing analog TV services. And the government wasn't aware of the situation a few years back and expedited its planning. All over the world, uh there is a simulator, virtual reality, and a cloud office and Internet of Things and um smart uh office and home arrangements. We need uh the state-of-the-art five G technology before we can do that. According to a recent uh commission, uh audit commission report, we aren't doing a very good job in providing public Wi-Fi. And it is said that five G will very soon replace Wi-Fi. Unfortunately, we are one or two years behind in the rolling out of five G services. When it comes to smart city, it is the I T Bureau. And for assignment of spectrum, it is for the Commerce and Economic Development Bureau. And it will be two years before we can have five G services. Now, you can imagine that a spectrum is like a, 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 a carriageway. Uh the more carriageways we have, uh more users there can, can there be. The industry is of the view that under the leadership of the C E D B, the current policy have three big problems. First, uh spectrum available is scarce and the auction prices are low. It will, I mean, it will go It will, I mean, it will go to the lowest bid. This is just like the high land premium policy. And the planning is too little, too slow. This is really, just like land planning. They are not willing to innovate and the spectrum prices are very high. As a result, consumers have to pay more for such services. And because the auction prices are too high, operators may not have enough money to build the infrastructure. So on the whole, this has caused our development in digital economy to lag behind. The government likes to establish funds and build this kind of park and that kind of park. This is not good enough because the policy is too bad. We used to take pride in our infrastructure and in our telecommunications service. But because of the government's performance, we have fallen behind our competitors. When it comes to the handling of spectrum, existing operators will have the priority to be assigned spectrum first. According to the table by Telecommunications Office, from twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen, we'll not have any new spectrum for new telecommunications operators. This is just like our land matters. Land planning was bad. So in the coming few years, we won't have land for housing. And the same applies to spectrum. So in twenty twenty, we can only recycle recovered spectrum. We cannot launch a new frequencies. So we have a shortage in the supply of spectrum together with high spectrum auction prices. This has caused problems. So the past five years, income from auction of spectrum reached seven-point-six billion dollars. This is almost the highest in the world. This high, this price will be transferred to consumers causing at the expense of service quality. G S M A in last February announced a spectrum pricing-related research study. It's pointed out that high spectrum, expensive spectrum will give rise to poor quality and yet more expensive broadband services. Data use will become more expensive. So consumers will lose two-hundred-and-fifty billion U S dollars. I don't know what is the share of Hong Kong in this regard. The Telecommunications Authority has recently started a public consultation on the assignment and auctioning of two G services. And the four existing operators can divide or can share this spectrum and the rest will be auctioned. Will this maximize economic gains and social gains? If we distribute spectrum, we give it to the highest bidder, is it the best approach? Our treasury has too much money. So if we get billions of dollars of revenue by auctioning these spectrum, perhaps we should consider how we can plow back to the community for our own interest. For instance, we should expedite the planning of five G services and we should provide coverage to remote areas. This is something for the government to think about and to improve as soon as possible. Of course, when we are not happy with the performance of our government department, we shouldn't cut all its expenses and money for salaries. This is rather extreme. And I understand that some colleagues have their reasons for so doing. Mister Ray Chen has this amendment. I don't know whether it is because of five G services or some other reasons. And of course, I think Mister Ray Chen has a lot to say when it comes to other areas of work of this bureau. And I think I am very worried about our current situation. The industry is worried that we are too late. They cannot get prepared in time. The rolling out of five G services will be too late and that may tarnish our image. And if our five G network is not rolled out in time for those who are responsible for A R writing applications and Internet of Things, we cannot have effective services in time. So how can we develop and catch up in the future? And therefore, I speak to cut the, I urge the Communications and Creative Industry Branch of the C N E B to catch up. We must not allow ourselves to lag behind. Thank you. Miss Claudia Moore.
I'd like to speak on Mister Al Lockin and Doctor Cheng Chong-Tai's amendment on cutting the expenses for the Education Bureau. And also Mister Andrew Wen's amendment to cut the pay for the, under the Home Affairs Bureau. Education and Home Affairs. I thought we had spoken enough on that. But this morning, I browse newspapers. I rarely do so, but this, this morning, I browse the headlines. The Education, the Secretary for Education said that Cantonese is not the mother tongue of Hong Kong people. Well, this should have made headline of the cover page of our newspaper as well. Cantonese is not the mother tongue of Hong Kong people.
And I read it. It was back in twenty thirteen. I recall there was a discussion in, on the internet. At that time, it was said that it was only one of the theories amongst numerous scholars. There was nothing said about this representativeness. That's the end of that. How come today it becomes the headline? Even if it's not front page, A one, it's on A seven. Still, it makes the news. I find it very surprising because if there is sincerity in its governance when it comes to education, then clarify. I thought that it is just one of the articles in a collection. It doesn't represent the stance, the stance of the administration. Well, there is Ben, Mister Ben. Mister Ah Young, who is quite well-known scholar in Hong Kong. He said that it's an attempt to try to suppress Cantonese or try to belittle Cantonese. Well, if that is not the case, I expect the secretary to come to, to come to answer questions, to clarify. Well, the secretary said that, well, we have, we're trying to find out the situation to see what their intentions are. It's rather, it's nothing. Tong Chi Wah said that using mother tongue as a medium of teaching was really good. So what was the mother tongue he referred to? Chiu chiao? Pu tong hua? So in Hong Kong, mother tongue refers in general to Cantonese. Why do you have to try to be vague? And then this morning, Mrs. Carrie Lam talked as if, well, it's a very difficult answer that she couldn't possibly answer. So whether it is the Secretary for Education or Curriculum Development. If someone is listening, they may wonder, well, if they are not, if they don't get remuneration or funding for curriculum development, what would happen? Well, it is just a gesture to try to express our views because with the supporting vote from the loyalists, of course, that is going to be, the bill is going to pass. We're not going to just let it go like that without saying anything. We won't go down without a fight. We talk about mother tongue. Roy Kwong talked about what I said, what I said in motion. I moved to resist mainlandization. I talked about using your mother tongue as a medium of teaching and Cantonese. And Lau Kong Wah at that time said that, of course, rest assured, it is Cantonese. And this morning, Carrie Lam refused to answer what her mother tongue was. And yesterday, the Secretary for Education was talking gibberish. Well, don't underestimate the Secretary for Home Affairs. Previously, it was Ho Chi Ping. You know that, well, there was, it, well, it has to be someone with cultural experience. At that time, it was the co, the proposed Culture Bureau. I still don't understand why. Well, the secretary, the person I referred to just now was Patrick Hall. She talks about those controversies and commotions. Who caused that? At first, it was because of the vetting of textbooks. Who started it? It was the, it was government officials who started it. Cable, cable TV was very good. And but if you draw a cross over China, then you will realize that China actually lies in the, not at the right south of China. And then there was a second question. Well, do you think there is a problem when it says that when CPC took power in nineteen forty-nine, a large amount of mainland, mainlanders moved to Hong Kong? And I thought, hmm, that may be all right because it is, well, because it is for someone to move from one place to another. But no, it was a time when refugees is trying to escape war. And they, the government said that they, that is wrong because it was not refugees trying to escape, flee from war. Would you please pipe down because I am talking? They said that, well, when People's Republic of China being established in nineteen forty-nine, it has no direct correlation with a large amount of people moving to, to Hong Kong. But these origin, well, had nothing to do with the budget. However, when we're having a meeting in a different room, well, I asked a question in passing of the Secretary for Education. I thought he was going to just give us the official line. He might say that, well, when it comes to curriculum development, there would be a separate body and they would, and there is an expert panel. It's not a position to comment, but he answered. It was under the context of the budget. He said, quite smugly, that, well, no, it is not right to say that Hong Kong lies in the south of China because Hong Kong is, lies in the south within China territory. And there is no such thing as taking over. However, well, it, because in the basic law, it talks about resume the sovereign, the exercise of sovereignty of Hong Kong. I thought that Mister Young, Kevin Young was at least someone with a heart. And this time, I thought, maybe there were, maybe there is a reason. Don't frown because I am talking about two amendments related to education. One is the remuneration of the Secretary for Education. The other one is expenditure related to curriculum development. There is another amendment of Mister Al Lockin. Well, this will be distortion of history, trying to change history. If this is the way you promote civic education and this is unforgivable, an unforgivable sin against humanity. This ridic, ridiculous. In September nineteen ninety-seven, Tong Chi Wah announced, announced using mother tongue as a medium of teaching. What's mother tongue, Cantonese? How good is it? It's because it will help students learn and they will, they will love the subject. Well, there was a ten-year disaster with the use of a moth, mother tongue as a medium of teaching. I'm not going to talk about the merit and demerit of using mother tongue as a medium of teaching. But my point is that as soon as that was the handover, that was the, as soon as there was the taking over of sovereignty, well, immediately, there was a change in the wind. We're now in twenty eighteen. You don't know what your mother tongue is? If it is not trying to change history, I don't know what it is. You're trying to whitewash history. You thought that, well, it didn't look good. Well, this will be a black hole. No matter how much you try to whitewash it, it's still a black hole. Well, I'm afraid that when the curriculum is developed more, it will become communist language. The five thousand article of Carrie Lam. Well, she used a lot of terms that are quite, that are mainland communist language. Who started it? C Y Leng. If you say that language changes with the times and society. So it's no big deal, but there is a big deal because they use political language. If I asked you off the top of my head, have you heard of a place called Hangana? Do you know? Have you ever heard of this place? Well, actually, in official news report back in the days of Barack Obama, well, he visited Hangana for a visit. Actually, it is Havana, Hawana in Cantonese. I find it ridiculous that you try to please the central authorities by changing the, the terms we've, we are so familiar with, by changing the names of places. You will become a sinner and you'll go down as a sinner in history. Language is the spirit of our culture. If you want to destroy a city, you destroy the language first. If you want to destroy the language, you start with education. Of course, you start with media before that, but that is a different direction and a different topic. You start with the media. You use it as a tool to brainwash the public. Did you read a political comic in Ming Pao? Mother said to the son in Cantonese, well, after school, do this, do that, don't play video games. And the son used pu tong hua, foul language to reply to the mother. I'm not going to repeat it. We're not trying to belittle man, belittle pu tong hua. My pu tong hua can, can be much better than yours. I hold it in high regard, but you need to differentiate the two. You need to differentiate the two, if you learn language well. Then you open the eyes of, uh then you can open your eyes a lot. Well, now we have officials from the Education Bureau. Cantonese, we said, we call Gekou Yim Se, what is in uh普通话? In普通话 is big fu, uh which means gekou. But literally, it means a little tiger on the wall, and it is in Cantonese. Yim Se, which means a snake under the o- um, under the roof or um. The canopy, maybe it is just like what Mister Ben said. You try either to suppress Cantonese or try to belittle it. I think the only thing you want to do is try to Minglandize Hong Kong, to to turn Hong Kong into one of the many cities. On the mainland, so we can't accept that. Mister Ray Chen. Just now Mister Charles Mok talked about Amendment eighteen, that is the reduction. Of the uh Communications and Creat- and Creative Industry Unit. The personal, annual personal emolumen. I may not be able, I I thought I wasn't going to have a chance to talk about it, but since Mister Mok mentioned it, I'm going to. Say something about it, this is not about telecommunications. I'm, I feel very happy if members speak under this head and subhead. In relation to this branch, well, it's responsible for um telecommunications broadcasting. As well as creative industry. Well, when it comes to Hong Kong's television industry. We talk about our glorious days back in the eighties and nineties, but it's not the case today. We used to be. The leader in Chinese speaking places, but now people would rather watch Korean uh TV. Uh programs, uh Japanese programs or Taiwanese programs or Taiwanese.
And we have. Few cinemas and the production of film has declined. And uh we have to look at A C G animation, cartoon and electronic games. All, all of these are the response, come under the responsive purview of uh. The, this particular uh branch of the C D P. But of course, they carve out esports to the I N T Bureau uh subsequently. I want to talk about subhead one seven eight. At the creation of a new program, A O four, caring and sharing. Eleven point three, one six billion dollars. A new subhead is to be created called Subhead A O four, I'm concerned that this would become a common practice. When you want to do caring and sharing or give a handouts. You would uh use this mechanism. And this year, the administrative cost is high, according to Mister Por Chan, because it's the first time we do it. I said it's not the first time, we did it before. But for this subhead, it's a new one, for it's creative for the first time this year. I would say this is not the most efficient way of going about it. If you have a big surplus in the future, if you want to do more in caring and sharing. I don't want you to do this, I want you to give everyone uh a handout. Well, you did not listen to us this time, you want to just give a hand, handout. And next year, the year of the next, we have a what, District Council elections, electoral elections. I don't need to pressurize you, many political parties would do this. If the surpasses, the surpass is actually one hundred forty eight point nine billion dollars. Uh we have more in surplus, we have, it is increased by more than a ten billion dollars. When she pre- and he prepare, the budget, the surplus to him was one hundred thirty eight billion dollars. I'm talking about the next year, we should use a smarter, more efficient way to keep them, give money. Back to our people, so that we can vitalize the economy, this is something that we want to spend. Uh if it's done a year later, then the effects can only be achieved a year later. If you say that uh we are not moving fast enough to our economy. Uh don't blame the council, because judging from the way you're doing things, you are also doing it slowly. And also head one six, one eight six, Transport Department. A cut is proposed. Uh the recurring expenditure of the Public Transport Fair subsidy scheme for the whole year. This is the administrative cost, which in my view is too high. Let me talk about this, 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 the scheme that we have now. And then you say, if you spend more than four hundred do- dollars per month in transport. That you will be given the, the excess. But subject to a cap of um three hundred, if you paid sixteen hundred. And after deducting four hundred, you pay one third of the excess of twelve hundred. Uh there's a cap, but you can use a different autobus card, for for every sixteen hundred you spend, you get, you get back three hundred. There's no cap, we said this is not right at the F C meeting. You would uh just benefit those great good traders, you are subsidizing those who are using a lot of uh transport. But you are not willing to do this under a personalized autobus card system. Uh because you are not smart, you're stupid. You ask people to queue up before the uh. Or at the beginning of the June, you have to tap your card at the destination that. Uh terminal to get the three hundred dollars, if you exceed the time limit, you don't get it, you have to queue up, it's going to be a long queue. But so you are doing something good, but you are not doing a follow-up job. I've asked some technical people whether some other way can be, can be done. Why can't the, the money be returned through any uh. At value machine, and I'm told that it can be done technically. So we like to make sure that the arrangement is more convenient. So that people can directly benefit from the scheme, but the government is unwilling to improve it. It has to do with the logic uh embraced by the government. They want to uh complicate simple things, if you re- uh don't remember to tap the. Your card at the right time, you don't get uh the uh subsidy. Alright, I think I have to move on to the next subhead, I want to cut. The expenditure on publicizing the race waiver. The cost of uh the, the provision is four hundred eighty thousand, it's not a lot. I asked a question about the administrative course or to publicize the waiver of race. It, it was said that there's none, because it's just uh. Uh not collecting the race, but there is a publicity cost, this paper, this piece of paper. Printing this piece of paper costs four hundred eighty thousand. Telling people that uh the race payer enjoys a waiver. Uh it doesn't matter whether you are a landlord or tenant, as long as you pay raise, you can be an agent, you can be. The actual owner, so why do you need to publicize this? For other schemes, you publicize the schemes, because you want more people to come forward to apply, but this one, there's no need to do so. So what's the purpose? Uh the government has give you uh a benefit indirectly. And their concern is that you may not know it, you may not know that you should be thankful. And therefore, they print this piece of paper to so-called publicize the waiver. Many members, uh including poor establishment members. Of the view that this way, race waiver can be arranged in a better way. For those who are rich, they get the ten thousand dollars for four quarters, two thousand five hundred per quarter, they don't need to thank you. But for tho- those who are poorer, when they think that, that this is done for the land. Owners or property owners, they are not going to be happy about, or pleased with the government. So I want to cut the four hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh in publicity cost to help you, you are doing this every year. Those who don't get it, on hearing this will not be pleased. On hearing what you have done for publicity will not be pleased, and many people. Uh have already known about the waiver in race, and we have said that it's not very reasonable, you, you. You cover vacant premises, and even for chains uh stores. And even for ATM machines, the waiver applies. So you are favoring the rich, the more you publicize this game. The more those who are not benefited will be enraged. You say people hate the rich, but it's the result of government policy. Especially before this patch-up arrangement uh was announced, when we'd um. Submitted these amendments, it was before the time, the announcement of this uh. Patch-up arrangement. And now even people who said who would enroll for the D S E exam are now silent. Some people were was, would even try to enroll without any uh. Free waiver, so don't print so many of these. I know there's a reason why this uh piece of paper should be printed. Under the patch-up uh scheme. If you get more than four thousand dollars in race waiver, you can not apply to get the balance. But if your, your benefit in terms of race waiver is a value that uh. Lower than four thousand, you, you get to, you can apply for the balance, so many people don't know. Whether they are getting a waiver, so this is printed to, to, to inform you. And you should check, uh you don't know whether you get uh a waiver. Of two thousand five hundred a quarter. Some would claim that they are ignorant of the waiver, because the, the, the rates they paid. Is a, a big amount, and this has been sent to the uh. Race payers. Actually, the order to all, to the. Enable this is still subject to negative vetting, but it was already mailed out to race payers. At the end of March and April, we said it was not quite right already uh at a previous meeting. Uh I think I have time to cover one more head, one more item. It's Amendment number forty five, um head one four one, Government Secretariat, Labor and Welfare Bureau is about remuneration. No one is proposing to cut the remuneration of Secretary for Labor Welfare, but. He en- he enjoys comparatively higher approval ratings, I've got one minute left, and I just want to point out one thing. In responding to the comments. He criticized members uh for criticizing him. In respect of elderly services, he pointed out a so-called anomaly, it was said that the expenditure on elderly services. Will, will rise by eighty percent, and the number of elders will rise by four point three percent. And I quote, if this is slow, a slow the progress or, or small increase. How, how, how can, how else can it be called? What is fast and what is far, as low? I would say that even if the number of elders does not grow anymore, it's still slow. What, what do you want to catch up? You are just playing with figures and using a very distorted kind of logic to the full members.